Okay, it's 10 o'clock and I'll call this special meeting for the Agenda for the Budget Workshop to order Wednesday, June the 21st at 10:00 a.m. Please make sure that your cellphones are off. And we welcome everyone today from the department heads and our guests today that have come. We thank you and welcome to all the council too. Glad you made it, George, by the skin of your teeth here. So today, it's especially to discuss and give a direction to staff regarding the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. All the council members have received just a very preliminary overview prepared by Mr. McDaniel and staff members. We've had a few days to look that over and so at this point, we will jump in and ask Mr. McDaniel to give his opening and overview of the budget. And I would ask any visitors today, if you do have questions, we will jot them down along the way. And at the very end of the meeting, we will allow some questions, but I think for expedience' sake, we will go ahead and discuss the issues with council and staff and then it may jog some questions for you. And at the end, if you have something you'd like to ask, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I hope this setting is okay with you all. I thought it was a good idea in bringing the meeting down here so we could have it mic'd and it is live and it's video streamed and it's going to be obviously recorded. A little bit different situation with your mics on the table. I think it'll pick all of you up where they're sitting now. The handheld ones down there for the council members, probably best if you did pick those up if you wanted to ask questions or comment, but not necessary that you do that if it's just a quick comment. So with those introductions, I do want to say from the get-go that this is very, very early in our process. And so this is by no means a completed proposed budget. You'll see a proposed budget coming to you at your first meeting in August. And so there's plenty of time to rework anything that you see here based upon what the council would like to do. This is just a very rough draft. We don't even get our certified role until into July and so our property tax number will likely change a bit. And so there's nothing in here that's set in stone. So the first thing I want to do on the first slide, the council apologizes, but the screen will be behind some of you, but it's the same thing that you have in your notebook. And I'm just going to go page by page. So the first slide is the beginnings of what we want to move toward in terms of priority-based budgeting. These five items came out of your city council retreat that we had a few weeks ago. And we're going to start as we move through the budget process and before we get you a proposed budget in, into July, we'll have tried to identify things in your budget that match up with these five goals. A lot of them are capital-related, as you can see, but not all of them. And so that you can see, if these are your priorities, as we've talked about in our retreat, your big rocks, then how are we spending money around those big rocks and so that we can be focused on the priorities that the council has seen. Some of these are really big pictures, so it could be a lot of different things. And then finally, on this slide, this, as a reminder, these five items are going to be the beginnings of our strategic plan and so the staff will start fleshing out that strategic plan around these priorities. Okay, the next slide is potential programming in this draft budget. So far, it's approximately $26 million balanced budget. Again, that's going to change as we move through the process, higher or lower than that number. Property tax revenue is up 4.6% based upon your preliminary role. Sales tax revenue, we're projecting 4%, just a little bit of a reach. Typically, I think in the past, recent past, we've gone with 3%. This is only about $60,000, $70,000 more each 1% and so we don't think it's too much of an overreach. And then for streets, the count, yes ma'am?
To date, right now, maybe Ms. Yarber, but this is halfway through or a little bit more of the fiscal year. Do we have an indication of that sales tax increase at about 4% or what's our running rate?
It's strong. It's in that range, yes ma'am.
It's more than that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then on streets, we are programming, at least at this point, and that we can certainly take direction from, additional direction from council on this, but we're programming an additional $250,000 for street maintenance. So that gets us up to the 1.5 million mark. And this is according to that plan and the presentation that you got from Stewart just a while back. So this is an increase and it's accelerating the spending on streets. And then three full-time positions that we're proposing at this point. Number one, a construction inspector in our engineering department. We have two. This would be a third. Actually, one's a project engineer and the other one's inspector, but this would be an additional inspector. These folks do a lot of plan review for development and they also do inspections on public improvements for both city projects and private projects and they've been very busy. Danny and his shop have also been very busy with their inspections and as a result of that, you'll have seen in the detail that revenue is up in, with building activities. So that's another reason why we can afford to fund this position. The second one is the evidence technician for body cameras. This was talked about, I understand, last year when we added body cameras. We knew that we were going to have to add additional staff because of the review and editing of videos, you know, you may have one crime scene, but you may have six cameras if there's three people there plus their squad cars. And so there's got to be somebody that maintains all that evidence. And then finally, we have a maintenance worker that we want to put in as full-time and this would replace three part-time. I think the net increase is about $6,000, but it would be a full-time position that would have benefits. We've had some trouble keeping those part-time positions and this would not be for the athletic complex, as I understand it. This would be for just general maintenance of mowing parks and so forth. So that leaves us with an estimated reserve fund balance if we were, if things would remain as they are today, which they won't, but 27% at the end of fiscal year 2018. Our goal by policy of the council is 25% and this would be our cash balance for general fund. Before I leave this page, I do also want to comment on a couple of other positions that I've been looking at with, and I've talked to the council is, you know, I told the council when I was asked in my interview, you know, what would you do your first 30 days? And that would be evaluating the staff and I would probably have some tweaks that I would want to make, but I saw a strong staff and I didn't see a need for major changes. But one of the things that we want to do is take the planning position that we have and make it director for, or executive director for development services. And so that person would report directly to me and not EA. I'm a big believer in a fairly flat organization, so that person would report directly to me and EA would remain with his other departments plus pick up a lot of other duties to help me out, like with economic development and so forth. So we want to begin recruiting for that position immediately. Gordon's done a great job for us as an interim planner and he wants to go back to retirement and I don't blame him, but so we need to get busy on filling that position. And so it would be serving a dual capacity as the chief planning officer and the executive director for development services. So it's not an additional position. And then the other one that I have talked with some of you about or all of you about is the main street director or manager. And so my recommendation is that we basically freeze that position for now. I'm not saying that we do away with the program, but I really want to get into, really drill down on kind of a path forward for that program in all of downtown. And of course, I anticipate that that's going to be a chapter in your upcoming comprehensive plan that'll have a lot of scrutiny. So we'll have some time to evaluate that. And so I want to freeze that position for now and repurpose it for, bring somebody in to do what I want to call it as executive director for strategic initiatives. And that person will be doing process improvement, business planning around our strategic planning and have some direct line responsibilities for some departments as well. And so those two positions, we want to move on even before next fiscal year, October 1. It's not adding positions. There's money in the budget to do those things and so we're going to move on those pretty quick here. Yes?
So Mark, you're not thinking of enhancing that position that's going to be planner plus director of executive services, or at least not before the budget?
It, we would go ahead and start advertising for it now and try to fill it even before October 1st.
But, but it sounds to me like it's an upgraded position.
It is.
That might require more money.
It is. It is, but it's not significant.
Okay.
And for the other one as well, the difference between the main street director and this other position.
Okay.
It's not a big number, yeah. So we, that's why, you know, these are recent developments and so these numbers could change a little bit based upon that, or we might just try to absorb it. So, because it's not a big number.
So you're talking three new positions, one change of direction and one future but on hold for this next fiscal year for the main street?
The main street, yes.
Okay.
We're just not going to fund that particular position, so it's frozen.
Is that what you got?
We're going to repurpose it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's clear. I thought you might be talking about the maintenance worker position.
Yeah, that's a new one.
It's kind of different.
Okay. All right, so the next page is a summary on general fund revenue. This is typical of most cities where property tax is your largest revenue source and then sales tax comes in second. The two together make up 61.5% of your total revenue. We are proposing some adjustments to some fees that are in the general fund and those are with emergency medical service and I'll go over that in more detail in a moment. And then we are also making some adjustments to the transfers that we make from the utility fund to the general fund. So we looked at the overhead reimbursement, direct cost allocation that we do for administrative services provided to the utility from, from the general fund. This would be things like finance and HR and legal and so on. And so the finance staff did a super job of looking at some of the data about, for each of those and what made sense, you know, do you use personnel count, for example, or do you use percentage of budget? Do you use number of agenda bills, for example, for Brenda? And so we've done that and as a result of that, we feel like we need to reduce that transfer, that overhead reimbursement. At the same time, I am recommending that we begin to charge ourselves a franchise fee. In this case, we're calling it a street use fee and it would generate about $240,000. So the net of those twos is actually, I think, a little bit less overall, but the idea here is that 240,000, that would, the 2% of gross revenue would generate as a franchise fee, which is, most cities do this, by the way, would then offset the increase that we're having for streets. So it would be a direct relationship to the money that we want to increase for spending on streets. Okay, so that covers those two and as I mentioned, overall, the transfer is down by about 2%. Then, yes ma'am?
I apologize for not having asked this in advance. I just didn't do my job. When I saw this pie chart, it reminded me that there's one in this year's budget book and the one in this year's budget book is quite different. And that led me to wonder what the revenue was, the total revenue, how those percentages could change. And it looks to me like the total revenue in this presentation today for 2017 doesn't match the fiscal year '17 budget total for general fund revenue in this book, in the current book. And I remember some budget amendments that we've done during the year, but would you, could you remind me what those are?
Sure. Sure. And you'll find that on the expenditure side too.
Okay.
Where we've moved money. It could either be a budget amendment that you all would have to do or we've transferred...
And I think I remember that every...
Yes.
Yeah, or it'd be a transfer of money from one account to the other that the departments might do or I might do. So we have a complete, I guess, comparison of that and we could, we could be glad to share that with you individually if that...
Oh, okay.
Or if you have a specific question about any one item, then Sandra could probably field that now.
I don't have it.
Okay. All right, well, we will go ahead and do that and get that out to you all. Any other questions on that slide? Okay.
It might change the property tax depending on what they do at the special session. You know, we've talked about that perhaps.
Yeah, is that going to impact next legislative or next fiscal year?
It would impact this year.
The '18.
Okay, okay.
It wouldn't go into effect.
It almost certainly.
Yeah.
Put it into effect January 1st.
The next fiscal.
Yep. So, and that's a great segue into the next slide, Mayor. This is property tax revenue and so we are projecting 4.6% growth. At the bottom of the slide, you can see we haven't seen that kind of growth since 2009. 27% of that growth is new value, new construction coming online for the first time, but the rest of it is revaluation of existing property. So just for reference, as we move through this process over the next month or two, every one cent on the tax rate, and obviously ours is 56 cents right now, would generate 123,000 if you wanted to reduce it or add at this point. And again, that number's going to change as we get the certified role in July, but that's the number that we're working with now. Okay, sales tax revenue, this is what you were asking for before, Mayor. And so we are projecting that 4%. The estimate that you see in the graph up top, when we did this, was closer, just right under 4%. It's even stronger now as we got our last month in. We do a two-step methodology. Finance runs a regression analysis and then they look at some external factors and you can see those there just anticipating what the economy might do. And then we do an independent validation with a company that does audits for sales tax and other revenue called Mooney Services and they've given us a projection of 3.9. 1% above the 4% because it compounds, it's a little bit higher, would generate $75,000. So if, you know, we wanted to go to 5%, that'd be another $75,000. And by the way, I'm not recommending that. Just because sales tax is such a volatile revenue, it impacts you two months later, whereas property tax doesn't impact you until a year later because it's set with the certified Okay, service revenue, this is the EMS that I mentioned earlier, the changes here. We are projecting overall 2.4 million, which is 100,000 or 4.4% over the current year. This includes a 2.8% increase in the base fee for mileage and transport. Last time we had an increase in this area was in 2013. And then, as you, council's fully aware, we did outsource our collections and billing with Intermedix and that's, that's actually going very well for us. And you can see the results of the advantages, quicker claim filing and so forth. And just a note, at the bottom, we also do receive funding from Kerr County in the amount of 1.2 million annually and there is a CPI adjustment to that each year. So they do also contribute to that service. And then in the chart on the bottom right-hand, it might be hard for you to see, but that just shows the difference in the pricing with that, that fee increase of 2.8%. So for example, basic, basic life support, non-emergency would go from $418 to $430. And if you're interested in knowing what, how that compares to other jurisdictions, then we can get that information for you if you like. And I don't know if you have that today, do you Chief? Okay, he does have it. So why don't you go ahead and just share that with them?
The names of the different agencies are not on there because Intermedix can disclose that information, but it's cities comparable.
So if you look at this chart, just to do a little interpretation and then versus the slide on the screen here and in your packet, basic life support, emergency is the second number. And you can see right now it's 669 rounded, which is what you see in the graph on the lower left-hand. And then that compares then to the other clients that he's got listed here. Chief, do you know if these are in the region or where these clients might be?
They are in the region.
They're in the region, okay. So very competitive and, you know, I think we can all agree that we've got just an outstanding emergency medical services department that serves not just City of Kerrville, but all of Kerr County. And as I said, they just do a terrific job. So any, yes sir?
Are we satisfied that Kerr County contribution is an appropriate one? Not too high, not too low?
I'm not sure. When we negotiated that, how old is the contract?
It's one and a fourth year.
Out of how, 10-year contract, fourth year?
10-year contract, right?
It's adjusted each year for CPI and we'll have the numbers at the end of June to be able to adjust it, but historically it's only been like less than $10,000 worth of adjustment each year.
Each year, okay, fine, thank you.
Is that, are those numbers transposed a little bit on ALS1E, Advanced Life Support Emergency? 814 in the book and 841?
The book is correct and the Intermedix graph is...
Okay.
Other questions on this slide? Okay, moving on to expenditures. Again, this is just general fund and general debt service fund. So the council, I think it was Mr. Barudy, asked me before your retreat to do an analysis over a long period of time about, not dollars, but percentage-wise, how much are we spending on different services? And so we've grouped some things together to make it a little easier to read. So public safety, for example, includes police and fire. And so you can see over time how that's shifted. Now, we may have increased funding in a particular department, like for example, development services with the new inspector, or engineering with the new inspector, but if the percentage is dropping because dollars overall are going up. And so it's not, the increase is not significant enough to reflect an increase in percentage. So you can see, for example, that streets with that increase of 250,000 is going from 10.19% to 11.71%. So just interesting kind of perspective there on, on how spending has shifted over time. Yes, sir?
Is there a reason why in past years, streets separate and then in this cycle, we're doing streets and solid waste together?
As far as the way that we have it presented on this slide, just because it, when we broke out solid waste, it was so small. It, and, and so just to make this easier to read, we combined it, but it's not, solid waste is a pretty constant number.
But I'm going historically...
Yeah, it's less than 200,000.
Yeah, just historically, it makes the streets percentage seem higher, that's all I did in comparison when I was looking at stuff. I tend to be focused on our streets versus parks. And so now it's just a little bit higher, but probably higher because of the solid waste, that's all I'm...
And, and, but isn't it consistent over the...
Yeah, but it is.
Over the period?
Yeah.
And so, you know, a little bit extra.
Okay. So then the next slide is more information, big picture on general fund expenditures. Left-hand side is by department and then on the right-hand side, you can, and we do break out streets versus solid waste on that graph, but on the right-hand side is by category. So obviously personnel is your biggest expense in a service industry. This would be typical of most cities. And then on the, by department, public safety is typically your, your largest expense, you know, followed here by streets and parks and recreation and so on.
Okay, well, actually, I don't want to harp on it, but on the previous slide, there's solid waste and it was being 11.21, right, percent?
Mm-hmm.
So in the graph we're looking at now, it's...
It's more.
11.6 plus 11.07.
The, yeah, right. The first one includes debt service. So that means that it would be, it decreased the overall percentage of the pie. So the next, this graph that you see on the screen and on your slide is, does not include debt service, it's just general fund. Okay.
Wait a minute, on the bar graph, is it debt service its own category?
Yes.
At the top.
But on the pie graph, it's not included. And that's why the numbers are different.
Oh, I get you.
So just to kind of recap on expenditure highlights, we are, most departments have been asked to just maintain current service levels with some exceptions that we've talked about. We are including an average 3% pay-for-performance or merit increases, which is what we have in the current year budget. On public safety, we've been adjusting the steps after doing a market study. Couldn't afford to do that all in one year, so it was over a three-year period. And so that's, we completed those adjustments in the current year budget. So that would mean that going forward in fiscal year '18, there's nothing additional right now programmed for public safety in terms of any, any raises. So if they had their step in the coming year, they would get 4%. If they don't have a step in the coming year, they would not get anything. And so one of the things I'm, would like to work on, and I'd like feedback from you, is look at, trying to do some adjustment. CPI this year was 1.7%. So every 1% adjustment to public safety is about $100,000, including benefits. So if we were to do 2%, for example, that'd be $200,000 that we'd need to find in next year's budget. And so if that were something y'all wanted me to do, I could go back and see if we could rework some things and, and try to find, try to make that happen. So I'll pause there and see if there's any feedback on that.
I would favor that. And possibly unfair to give everybody else a raise and not the emergency people.
Tell me again, the national, we're looking at three, but it's 1.7? Is that what?
Locally, it's 1.7% as of May.
And last year it was three, average for general?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about CPI.
Yep.
Last year, we, in the current year, we budgeted an average of 3% for merit, for general government employees, not public safety.
Current year has 3%.
That's right.
Projected is 3%.
Yes, both.
Yeah. I think KCAD's proposal is 1.9, is that what we've seen?
I haven't seen that yet. They're going to be presented...
I don't know what county's doing. I've asked, but I haven't got a call back, just for comparison, you know?
I know that KCAD's going to be presenting their budget to you all very soon.
It might be worth looking at what other public institutions are offering in terms of a sort of a standard increase or ways.
Sure.
Maybe the 3% could come down a little bit and make way for police and fire to have a little of that.
We can, we can look at any and all that, sure. Yeah, so we'll include that.
If it turns out, if it should turn out that 3% is generous compared to the rest of the community, it may be stingy compared to the rest of the community. I just don't know.
Right.
I've got a hunch 3% is pretty close.
Average, think?
Yeah, that's, that's my...
You maybe have Shriner in mind or the hospital?
Well, that's my, that's my gut feel for what I'm experiencing, know about what's going on around here.
Well, maybe we could have some tangible feedback on that.
Yeah, we will definitely...
The other, the question is, the, the public safety folks have, have a plan, a step plan and the others get an annual review. And that's, those are two, I at least look at those things, the one and a different one.
Exactly. But both deserve to have funding for increases, don't they?
Well...
Equally?
Not necessarily, not necessarily because they aren't equal. Because at some point, the, the, the public safety people get a bigger, like a 4% raise every other year. Okay, so, and they...
And does that go on indefinitely, Mark, or is that just designed to catch us up to market?
It, it does not. So the 4% steps are, they do top out. So you might have seven steps in a rank or five... or five, between five and seven steps in a rank. Once they hit the top, the top range, they don't get any more unless we do cost of living adjustments. And so, where I was going with the two percent idea is that if you take, you know, a civilian, as I call them, a general government employee, it's, over two years, it'd be six percent if you did it, if they got the average in two years in a row. And public safety, they're going to get in that two-year period a four percent somewhere, and this is the additional two percent, so it's six and six, over a two-year period.
So, it arguably comes at even.
Right.
That'd be, that'd be my goal, is to have some kind of equity. I know it can't be exact, because the system, but, but in terms of overall.
Well, I, I think that, as I, think what I heard is that over two years.
Mm-hmm.
They're the same.
Over two years, general employees would get six, three each. Over two years, public safety people would get four.
And we hadn't got the water and sewer, which.
If you leave it alone.
If we don't change.
Yeah, if, well, but ever one percent, okay, okay, that, ever one percent pay adjustment is 100K, and that's not in the plan right now.
Correct.
One, one percent is 100K or two percent?
One.
One, it's right there.
For public safety.
Bullet point three right there.
Yeah, last, 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 last sentence.
The last sentence.
I thought that was in, included.
Not yet.
Okay. Well, if, for my two cents, it'd be good to include it. If we, if we can.
Well, and it's still early, right? So, we, we, we've got some time to go back and do a little research, as you all have suggested, and we'll do that, and we'll be back to you probably at your July meeting, when we talk about utility fund, and we'll be able to relay back to you what we found, and then we can move forward. Okay, so then at the bottom of the same slide, this is a recap of some of the things we've already mentioned, but there's a few additional items that we haven't mentioned. Streets, as I mentioned, increasing it, 250,000, parks, a full year operation of the sports complex, which is going to be your next slide, and I'll get into that in more detail in a minute. Engineering, the new construction inspector, police, the new evidence technician, code enforcement, this is something we, I haven't mentioned yet. Right now, we do have a lot of building, not a lot, but we have some buildings that are substandard that need to be torn down. And then, we would probably put a lien on them after we, they, we torn the, tore them down. There's a whole process you have to go through as far as do notice to the property owners and so forth, give them the opportunity to fix it up, and we would do all that. But, the problem is that Danny and his folks don't have any initial funding to do the demolition, and so, there's a little bit of seed money in there, $6,000, and I don't know that we've even spent that this year, but we would increase it to 30.
Which would tear down, three or four?
Uh, probably, depends on what they've got in them, how big they are, you know, if it's a commercial property, if there's asbestos, different, you know?
I think it was, what, how much was it for City Hall, eight something or?
Not sure.
Maybe more. Yeah, right, if there's asbestos or something, it's pretty expensive. But you could recoup some of that through the lien, so.
Eventually.
Oh.
Yeah.
That sounded really awful.
Long term.
Maybe.
A little bit.
Resulting a little bit more.
And I'm thinking if it's got dilapidated, be holding on.
And then, the next one is public information, it's a small item, but I think it's a big item in terms of communicating with our citizens. $4,000 for a newsletter, it's some feedback that we got in the citizen survey, they'd like to see that, and a couple ideas that we're toying with right now is either a water bill insert quarterly as opposed to just newsletter once a year. And then also, we've been talking to the newspaper about doing insert and get, you know, a wider circulation even outside of city limits. So, some ideas that we're working on, and we'll be back to y'all on that before we, if y'all approve it in the budget.
Is that just printing costs?
Uh, printing and distribution.
And distribution, and under what special services department is that?
It would be admin, yeah.
Okay. You have it written in, special services here?
Yes. And then the last item is the comprehensive plan. We do have $300,000 that we've accumulated over the last two years, and this is an additional 75. You'll, when we talk about utility fund, I'm also proposing an additional 75 on that side, so they put a little bit in, because obviously, they, they're going to benefit from plans around development and, and expansion and land use and all that, so, just a little bit from utility fund, but that, that put us at a point where I think we can do what we need to do in terms of hiring someone. So, I've put together around the launch of the comprehensive plan, and I'll be talking to you all about that this month, I'll get, make a point to share that with you. I'm still tweaking it and finalizing the draft so that you all can comment on it. But it'd be a year-long process, heavy public engagement, which is part of, a lot of the expense, and, and getting a team in here. So, we went, we're right now, EA and I are working on getting RFP out on the streets to request proposals for someone to help us with that. And then, what I envision would be that the council, you know, is typically not involved directly in, in interviewing candidates like that, but this is such a big community event and project that I'd probably want the council involved if you want to be in the interviews of the consultants, so, I think it'd be helpful.
I didn't know that, you know, I, you, I don't know where the estimate came from that we had before, I guess, Mr. Parton, but I do remember about 10 years ago, just the consultant hired for the UDC was about 350,000, and that was a long time ago. So, it sounds like a lot, but it sounds like that's market, too.
Yeah, it is, and, and so, it might, it could be more expensive than the money we've got set aside, and we'll, we'll deal with that, and maybe we just do it in pieces as far as the comprehensive plan now, and then budget the following year for the, the code updates, but, you know, it can be expensive, and again, it's a lot of time with the public and the consultant involved with that and orchestrating the meetings, because you're talking about steering committee meetings every month, subcommittee meetings probably at least every month, town hall meetings, a, a, a community retreat, newsletters, I mean, it just starts to really add up, and, but, but you got to do that if you really want to reach all parts of your community. So, okay, so then, next is sports complex. Still hoping to open the soccer side, believe we'll be there this fall, right, Ashley? Where's Ashley? Yep, we good? Okay. And then baseball in the spring, the fields are coming in very nicely now with this warm weather on the Bermuda and all the water we're putting out there on it. So, it's a partial, you're staffing for this in the current year, you can see that in the graph on the right hand side. And then, next year, we also then have a full year plus a little more, little more equipment to take care of the fields. Income, on baseball, as the council knows, we've got a, a contract with DPAT that the first two years, they're not charged a fee, a management fee, and then the next several years is based upon how many tournaments they come in. So, we're not counting on any income in the next year for, from DPAT. On the soccer leagues, you know, there's two leagues, we're still in the midst of trying to negotiate those contracts. As far as tournaments that we might have out there, we don't have a number for that yet, because that might end up being in the contracts with the leagues. We're, we're sorting that out now, and I think that's slated to come to you in July, those, those agreements.
So, we, we have no, not been able to schedule any outside tournaments that might bring in revenue to see what happens with the local leagues?
I think that's primarily the case, yes. And of course, the soccer's in flux a little bit in terms of what we might be doing there. So, we're, we've got deal points and draft contracts that we're talking to the leagues about, and again, y'all will see those very soon, probably July.
So, some of the contract provisions might have to do with who organizes.
The tournaments.
Tournaments and who.
Who gets the revenue?
Who's the revenue?
So, on this next slide, this just gives you, again, summary data, and shows you the variance from last year's actual to this year's estimate to next year's budget for revenues by category and expenditures by category. And then, there's some explanation on the major variances to the right. Most of these we have talked about, in fact, all of them we've talked about. There's a small item on other expenses for, says Christmas lighting and contingency. So, I'm not planning today to go page by page on the, on the detail, but I do have all the staff here today to answer your questions on any of the detail, as you've, if you've got questions in all that detail that we provided you in your books. But before we go there, I do want to talk about general fund, I mean, general debt service fund. We do use a separate fund for this, and every dollar that we collect in property tax goes first to pay debt, and anything left over goes to the general fund, so if we only have 98% collections, debt service is going to get 100% of what they need to pay debt on the tax rate, which is how we set the rate at seven cents, and then everything else, again, goes to general fund. Then, for us, we don't have a whole lot of general obligation debt. It's, in the past, it's been used to fund, as you can see here, streets, improvements, parks, fire stations and, and fire truck, and so, that's the remaining debt that we've got that you can see there. And then the debt service for the River Trail and the sports complex is funded by the EIC sales tax. So, on the next slide is the graph of that. In the green, you can see property tax-funded debt, which is stair-stepped, as you pay it off and it matures. We do have some debt that we've been looking at, I think it's more on the utility side, that we might be able to call early, refund it, and get a lower rate without extending the maturity, so every, we're all the time looking at opportunities to save money on, on debt. It's not a big number right now, based upon where interest rates are today, but it's something where we constantly watch. And then, in the graph, you can see the EIC-funded debt in blue. This is a comparison of our debt portion of our property tax rate. When you look at other jurisdictions and the portion of their tax rate that they dedicate to debt, Kerrville is, again, got very low debt on the general fund side, or general obligation side. So, next steps, this wasn't in.
On, on that page, does, is it a combination of general fund and EIC-funded debt service or just general fund?
Just general fund. Tax-supported debt.
Well, both of them are taxed.
Well, that's true, they have a sales tax, property tax-supported. This is not in your packet, we added this because we wanted to kind of share with public about our path forward. This is pursuant to the budget calendar that I've shared with you previously, but we have added one item that I want to get your feedback on, and I apologize, it's around, you have to twist your neck to get to it, but, so, today, we're at the first budget workshop, next budget workshop is July 19th, then we'll cover water and sewer fund, debt, water, sewer, debt service fund, golf and hotel motel. July 25th, this is something that's new, so, that's your regular city council meeting in the evening, and it's fairly light right now, so, what we wanted to do is add another budget workshop there to go over capital items, and so, this would be capital items for either EIC or general fund or utility, and, because I know that you all want to spend some time on that. And, so, that, that's just an idea for you all, rather than add another day to your schedule, just try to roll it into that meeting if that's agreeable to you all.
Like start at four or five?
We, we could certainly do that.
And, and that was July 25th?
Yes.
I guess if you saw that started building up for some reason on that date, we might could do a separate time, but I don't know why we couldn't.
Okay, that's what we'll do, is we'll monitor it. The EIC is going to see a budget on the 17th of July, so then you guys would see it right after that, at least their portion, and everything, but you'll see more because you've got the other funds. So, we'll, we'll monitor that, still start, have a six o'clock start time, and if we need more time, then we'll, we'll let you all know, we'll coordinate with you. Okay, then, then you've got your regular city council meeting on August 8th, and this is when you get the official proposed budget. By law, I've got to get a proposed budget to the city secretary by the end of July, so it'll be filed with her, and then it'll go out in your Friday packet, and then we'll talk about it on Ju, August 8th. I'll go over it formally. So, this then would be the, the, it won't be a draft anymore, it'll be the proposed budget, and then you all, from that point forward, will have, as you can see here, a series of public hearings and opportunities to weigh in further on anything in the budget, and then you, as a council, have the discretion to adopt any version of a budget that you like. It doesn't have to be my proposed budget, so if you wanted to change something, that's your discretion. So, the idea is that we would get through all of this by the end of September, because our fiscal year starts October 1st. And can we go ahead and send this schedule to the councils, Sandra?
I thought we had that.
You, you do have all this, the only thing that's new is the, the.
Extra.
Yeah, the July 25th. So, Mayor, there, and allow either myself or the staff to answer any specific questions that you might have about anything we've covered in the presentation, or as you have looked through some of that detail, we are prepared to answer any questions that you might have there.
So, overall, the, from the 17 budget, the, the revenues were, went from 27.7 to 26.6 under the general fund revenue summary.
The 20, I say that again, the.
And, well, the difference is, I think the amount, the dirt is what, we had, the actual, let's see, 2017 budget was 27.7 million.
Right.
And proposed 18 is somewhat less than that.
Right.
Because of the dirt.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because we received that 2 million.
Right.
Other than that, everything is pretty similar.
Right.
Okay, and you don't, you're not proposing any general obligation, nothing that we borrow for any projects, obviously, then in this?
No, no, no.
Council, I, I think that, I had, I don't know if you did, and I don't think you and I had as long as maybe others to go over this, but I kind of went through each department and highlighted a few things, if staff would bear.
Me too, I want to go page by page.
Okay, let's, let's do that then, so, any questions in the beginning, other than what I just asked on the revenue summary?
Yes, oh, oh, I, I was on the revenue detail.
Okay.
But I have two questions.
General fund revenue detail, then?
What's our irrigation permit, and what's our LP gas permit? How, how do we get revenue from irrigation permits?
It's item 016244.
Irrigation permits is when you have like a sprinkler system put in, they get a permit to install those through building services?
Oh, installation?
Yes.
Thing, it's not ongoing?
No, and LP is LP gas permits.
And, that surprises me that there are any inside the city limits.
Yes, ma'am.
But there are.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
There are no proposed increases marked for permits and fees under that?
Uh, no, ma'am, just, the only fee increases that we're proposing at this point is for EMS.
Okay. Then page two, if everyone would advance to that. The plan check fee, I noticed that we had an increase, is that because we are adding that employee and we are going to propose to, that's 016257?
Right, I think that's just, just activity, Mayor, it's not any fee increase, is that correct, Sandra? Yes, we, as I mentioned earlier, we, we have really, Danny and his folks have seen a lot of, and Kyle too, a lot of uptick in their activity.
Okay.
Most in commercial.
None of that is, is what we're taking from another source, it's just increase in activity?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Let's see, on the group home annual permits, does that? Let's see, on the group home annual permits, does that, we, we reduced the annual fee from 1,000 to 500. So I see, we have about 18 homes last I saw, that's 6286, and we're down, it looks like, to 17, but that fee was cut in half, the annual permit fee. So I wonder if that should have been adjusted.
Renewal was cut in half, let's see.
Danny, can you come up?
The renewal, the renewal was cut, I think, down to 350. The original $1,000 fee for the permit, I didn't remember, that one being cut in half on the original application.
No. Originally, is, yes, if it's first time, it's 1,000, but I believe annual renewals, which this is, is 500 now.
Okay, yes.
So that may need to be adjusted a little bit there.
Yeah, this, maybe just clarify what that means. Is this all annual renewal permits, or is it some new ones?
It's both.
It's both?
The new ones and the renewals are both in that same line item.
Okay.
But we will look at it.
On the school resource officer, KISD, do we have, is there just one?
Yes, that's correct, it's just one.
And, let's see, Kerr County, okay, that's right, we said that there's no, we're not showing an increase, but there is an evaluation, is that right, Amy? At the end of each year, there could be, or?
Yes, by the end of June, we'll have the inflation factor that we need to figure out what the increase is going to be. So for right now, we left it exactly the same, but it probably will go up a few thousand dollars.
Okay. And they'll have that to figure in their budget as well.
Yes, yeah, as soon as we get that number from the federal government, then we'll pass that along to them as well.
Can we go back to the resource officer, because I have a question about that? What was the, I mean, I assume it was a decision that was made, but the '17 budget, was there two people? Were there two of them, and we made a decision to?
Yeah, that's a good question.
There were two-
Chief, can you come up?
School resource officers that were, there were two school resource officers that were allocated to KISD. One of those resource officers left, and so that left us with one, and our ability to fill that job was impacted by staffing. We are now currently in the process of looking to fill that second position. So last year, the latter part of last year, there was only one school resource officer. This coming year, there is the potential that we will be able to bring another school resource officer onboard and move them to the middle school. So we may be back up to the two with this coming school year, this next fiscal year.
So then we would be essentially budgeting more than what we have budgeted, right?
Yeah, the KISD would pay us. And did you build it into yours, your employee budget?
That's correct. KISD pays 5/6 of the, of the salary for that position.
For both?
For both, correct.
And, and we don't know exactly what might happen on library. We built it in there. There may be some discussions, so that 6409 might change also. That's the fees that Kerr County residents currently pay to use the library. Any other questions on page two? If not, page three. Parks and Rec, I noticed that, let's see, rentals, let's see, what, quick question. Okay, it was less than '17, I don't know why, than '16, but there were some changes there that I noticed. Day passes look like they'll go down. No, let's see, they'll go up from, okay. There were some anomalies in this year, is what it was, that I had questions about, from what, from '16 to '18. But I guess we're, we're on target for what we thought we would do.
Going from the 30,000 to the 18?
Yeah.
So what made us do that?
Andy can come up?
All right. So, yeah, on the parks revenue, if you look at the '16 column, those are the actual numbers for fiscal year '16. So fiscal year '16, we had a very good year for parks. When we were setting the budget for '17, you know, it was probably in the May-June timeframe, we hadn't had the summer season, we didn't know how we were going to come in for '16, so we ended up coming in better than we had expected, but by that time, our '17 budget was already set. So for '18, we've looked at that '16 actual and said, okay, we need to bump our '18 budget up to very close to what we had in '16. As far as that fiscal year '17 estimated column, right now, we've left it alone, just because we want to be a little bit conservative, those are so weather-dependent, you know, if we get a lot of, summer is the busy season at the park, if we get a lot of rain, if it's excessively hot, we have a lot of cancellations. We don't want to forecast right now that we're going to hit those higher numbers. We're very hopeful that we are, and it, it looks good right now, but we were just a little conservative with that '17 estimate until we get through this busy season of the summer.
So you're, you're kind of estimating '18 on what actually happened in the year to '16?
Correct, correct.
And we'll hope during the summer that we, that we do that?
That we hit it, yep.
Okay. That explains that.
We'll go back up one. The, what's the difference between the soccer league fees and the soccer field rental? Who's going to be renting?
Ashley.
Where are you?
It's just above.
437 and 438.
Yeah.
So the league fees will be for both the organizations that we will have license agreements with. The rentals will be for organizations that will be renting the fields based on any needs that they may have, such as O L H and Notre Dame, or any other organization that might need to rent on time to time.
Okay, so then in likelihood, they would bring a soccer tournament?
That would increase.
Would that be, we're going to try and work that into their contracts themselves?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So hopefully, that'll increase.
Right.
Any more questions on page three? If not, page four. Still working on the disallowed. I don't, I don't guess our EMS fees are going to change that number very much, it's just a slight increase on the fees, but-
Well, I did have a question about those.
Go ahead.
So isn't the billing, part of the benefit of the billing that we're doing, wasn't that supposed to essentially reduce our write-offs in disallowed? Wasn't that sort of the goal of it, or part of it?
And it does on bad debt write-off.
No, we actually have more write-off.
Well, if you go back to '16.
But, yeah, it's higher fees. Basically, the, the billing, disallowed has to do with when we bill either insurance companies, or Medicare, or Medicaid, they have set rates. So we may bill it at $400, and they say, okay, we're only going to pay $200. We don't care if you went up 2.8%, we still only pay $200. And that disallowed is the amount that, is that difference. And so we record that separately. So whether we're billing ourselves, or whether we're using an outsourced medical billing specialist, you know, that's not going to change our disallowed, because their rate that they pay is the rate that they pay. We are hopeful that our charge-offs can be reduced some, because they are billing additional, additional entities such as car insurance that we weren't billing when we were doing it in-house. We want to actually see some of these results before we start, you know, expecting them. So we've had, like, four months of data so far with our new medical billing company. What we've seen for sure is that they are much quicker with their filings, they get everything filed quicker than we were able to with only a two-person operation. They file everything electronically, we were still doing a lot of it manual, paper filing. They get, you know, they get things refiled quicker if there is any kind of claim rejection, that kind of thing. They really do a great job with prioritizing, they file Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance emergency calls first, and there's a very quick turnaround on that filing and those payments. So they do a great job with prioritizing, rather than just, you know, working everything as it comes in, kind of thing. So, yes, we are hopeful that some of those things will increase our collections and will decrease our charge-offs. It's not really going to change our disallowed, though, because our disallowed is just set by whatever the government and the insurance companies will pay. So, yeah, it could come in better than this, but because we don't have enough data to say, yes, we're expecting, you know, $100,000 more, we've done more historical-based averages on percent for write-offs and disallowed.
Do, do we do regular adjustments on that? And who would do that? Like, for instance, if they said, okay, EMS charges this, but insurance doesn't pay it anymore at all, do we do adjustments when we get that feedback, and, you know, on what we set up on our fee schedule?
As far as adjusting our rates?
Or whether we charge for it or not, yeah.
So, part of the increase that we're doing this year with the fee schedule is based on the CMS, Center for Medicaid and Medicare. They do an ambulance inflation factor every year, and so we've used that as a means to increase our fees, and since 2013, it's gone up 2.8%. So that's our allowable, that they're giving us more, so when we adjust, we adjust accordingly. So hopefully, it kind of helps offset a little bit. So that's what we kind of look at there.
Okay. Any other? What is surcharge? What's under 6496?
Amy, you might as well move your chair up.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I don't remember.
And, yeah, David, feel free to jump in here. So this is a fee that our public service pays to us, and it's a fee for materials that go across their scale at the landfill. And so it's just specifically based on, it's just specifically based on weight of trash going across the scale, and each month, they send us a check. And we've actually been really pleasantly surprised this year with the size of the monthly checks that we've been getting. We were speculating at this time last year that we were seeing these increased fees because of storm damage and all the roofing material and that kind of thing going across the scale, but it hasn't tapered off any. One other source of speculation is, some of our, you know, now that we're giving out vouchers to the landfill, we actually do get a portion of, you know, the stuff that goes across that we give the free voucher for, we get some of that back in terms of the surcharge. So the vouchers were new this year, and that, that could help increase as well. David, do you have anything to add?
No, that, that is correct. Every ton that goes over the scale, we give a, you know, a dollar per ton of surcharge back to us.
Let's be trashy.
Let's keep our town clean.
Okay. Any other questions on page four?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what does 6607 mean? MC, City Portion OmniBase?
So M, yeah, we are limited by space in our software system, so I apologize for the abbreviations.
Municipal Court.
But, yes, MC is municipal court, and OmniBase, Susan, do you want to kind of explain that specific piece of it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
OmniBase is a vendor that we use in order to help with our warrants. So what will happen is, we will send cases that are active warrants to OmniBase, they will put a hold on the driver's license until the court case is disposed of, and so that's just a certain percentage that we get to keep on our end.
And I had questions about the grants I didn't ask. Why, why would we not, were we previously received fire and EMS grants? What, what were those? Oh, those were the applications Chief made, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, for the body, or something.
No, actually, on the 6521, the fire grant donation, that's a state grant for our Fire Marshal's program. The 6530 is a state grant where there is a tax for tobacco and drunk driving incidents that we actually get to fund training for our EMS services.
So it's just whenever they see fit to give it, that's?
Well, we've been getting the, the one for the EMS pretty consistently, as you can see, '17 and '16, but we didn't get anything on the, the state grant for the Fire Marshal's office last year.
Okay. And with the grants, what our approach has been, we'll budget for something if we know that we're going to get it, like, for example, fireworks sponsorship, or, you know, or something, box office assistant, something like that, where we know that we're going to get it. If it's something that we have to apply for, something that is going to depend on what budget the state passes, that kind of thing, we're not putting it in this budget, and instead, if we do get it, then we'll come to y'all with a budget amendment, and that's like what the Chief did a couple of times this year when we received those grants. But we don't put it in the initial budget, we wait till we actually receive it before we budget it as revenue.
And, and the Calo Foundation grant for $10,000 goes straight to the theater?
Yes, it's to help fund that box office assistant position, yes. And one thing, this is y'all's budget book from last year, this isn't as, as detailed of a description as what you've gotten today, but in the very back, there is a section called Account Descriptions. It starts, let's see, about page 367, and there is a brief description of each account that may help you when you're going through things.
Very good. That's going to save some of my questions coming up.
Okay. And page five. Anybody have any questions? I think everything looked fairly standard. Not much change, except maybe child safety fine, I don't know what that is, but here we are again with a '17 estimated, and have no idea what that is, but we can look that up later.
These are all the fees that are tacked on whenever you pay a traffic ticket. State law allows for them, and they have to be used for certain things, so it's all dedicated to certain things.
And again, that soccer lease, where does that fit in? How does that jive with what we had earlier?
Which item, Mayor?
06902.
That's the current.
That was the current, did we? Oh, that's what they had in the old field.
Right, $25.
And we didn't bill anything into the new year.
Right.
But, okay, we might. Okay? Anything else? Page six, anyone have any questions on six? Again, the difference in the '17 was that 2 million that came in for the dirt that wasn't anticipated. Any other questions? If not, general fund, I'm sorry?
All right, could you slow down just a minute? I'll try to read mine, but make sure I don't have any more-
Okay.
-questions. And, yep, those are cool, okay.
Yeah, those are really helpful, Mr.
Good. The radio control airplane lease, won't that go away?
No.
Aren't we digging that up?
No.
They didn't need to take that.
We dug around it.
Yep. The concession lease will be either R, right, either place? Oh, that's Kerrville-Shroener Park, I'm sorry, not soccer. Okay?
Okay.
Something else?
Thanks. Nope, nope.
Okay.
This is working very well.
General fund expenditure summary. Basically, on the city attorneys, Mike, I know is here, the $26,740 increase for, is, you can explain to us.
Thanks, Mayor. Good morning. Basically, this is all, the significant increase is due to the prosecutor. You'll notice that a few years ago, we were at $20,000, and I ran the numbers very quickly this morning, so we've gone from fiscal year '15, about 3,500 citations or cases filed, and now, last year, we're over 9,000, and Susan is projecting 8,500 this year. I've noticed that Lucy Pearson, who's our prosecutor, outside prosecutor, and we don't have a contract with her, we just pay her when she submits her, her bill, but she's up to about nine hours a week. And so we're trying to anticipate that, those services, and the cases being the same, plus we factored in a more robust code enforcement docket. I know when I, when I first got here, we, we had a code enforcement docket that was anywhere from 10 to 20 cases a week, and I anticipate that, you know, we might not reach that level. not reach that level, but certainly with Danny incorporating some additional costs and fees in his, that we might get to that. So that's just anticipating that.
Let me comment on that quickly. So I don't want to, I hate to go back, but if you go back to page five on the revenue detail, and you look at the top of the page where the third item says Municipal Court fines, you'll see where we're collecting on a lot more cases. We've got an active patrol division, and so this is reflected then in our cost for prosecution.
Which line number?
It's account number 6611. So you see...
Yeah, page five, under General Fund Revenue Detail.
Right.
So that increase was 10,000 or eight, whatever.
Well, you look at last, or 6 actual, you can see how it's climbed.
Let's see. And on Engineering, the 83,000 increase there was due to...
Most of that's the new position?
The new position, that's what I was thinking. Does that include, does special services as well for Fries and Nichols?
No, it does not. Most of Fries and Nichols' work is associated with a particular project, and so Fries and Nichols' costs associated with the project would become part of that capital project. It's not shown in the engineering operations budget.
So that'll be separate somewhere.
Correct. So that would be like discussed in that July 25 meeting, when we talk about capital budgeting, and we look at things on a project-by-project basis.
Okay. Let's see, Library, 35,000 increase there was mainly, we're not adding, right, to the employees, Laura?
No, not in the library.
No, we are not adding to employees. We are ending a contract for our integrated library system, which is our card catalog system. We are looking at implementing a new system at that time, and that will account for implementation fees for that first year.
So it's a software, like, or a subscription?
Yes, ma'am.
Will that be an annual addition then? Will it increase, or do you have contracts?
No, ma'am. Once the contract is in place, the implementation is just for the first year. Then there will be a maintenance cost at a lesser amount for the following years of the contract.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, a little more detail. So you're going off that first page here, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So can you kind of go in order through the detail?
Yeah.
So...
Then you want to turn over next to the detail then and go with...
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that then. That's what I was going to do.
More specific to that.
Okay, yes, we can do that. Page one of the General Fund Expenditure Detail.
So, I didn't really have...
I had, if you didn't, the capital equipment, 918 and 970. What did that, what are those? It's quite a bit less than what we had in 17. What all did that, was that for vehicle and that kind of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sandra?
I think we had 836.
It's not a good time to pass out your chart as well.
And again, is this something you want to cover late in the next meeting?
No, this is good. We'll do this now.
In the transfer out to the Asset Replacement Fund, every year, we evaluate the vehicles and the equipment based on the wear, tear, mileage, and things of that nature. And in 18, we're proposing two new vehicles in the Police Department, two in the Kerbel Shrinor Park, one in Code Enforcement, a new ambulance, a new fire truck, and a new dump truck. So we have quite a few items coming up. Part of that's covered by the budget amendment we did earlier in the year of the 750,000. So we don't need to transfer the total amount over to replace all those vehicles this year.
Can we get a detail of that at some point in time? I think we did last year, which was really helpful. I've been sort of checking that off as we go on the 886,000 vehicles we've purchased.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make y'all copy that.
Very good.
What is the transfer out of GOLF? What is that?
That's basically to cover any shortfall in terms of revenue versus expenditures.
And we don't estimate. It's about a 900 and something thousand dollar budget in GOLF, I believe. And generally, it's just break even. So we're anticipating we may not break even in 18.
Right.
Any particular reason, or...
Scott, too, would you like to talk about that?
The budget in the past has been an aggressive budget, and we look more on the revenue side instead of the expense side, generate more rounds. And with the weather the last couple of years, when Mr. Parton was here, we put an aggressive budget together without weather taken into consideration. The last couple of years, we've been hit pretty hard with the weather.
So they actually lost money in those years? It's just not reflected here? It's reflected in the GOLF fund?
Yeah.
This is more conservative.
I was wondering why there's no insurance for the City Council. Are we not...
Bonded, yes.
Bonded somehow?
You are. Yeah.
Where's that show at?
Go ahead.
We have that in M870, Department 870, under General Operations as part of our overall insurance costs.
It's probably lumped with other people.
Right.
Special Services, what, in each department? I'm kind of curious, as we were last year. In City Secretary, we can just, each time we get to that, it's kind of interesting to see what all goes under Special Services in each department. So we have 4850. It's very similar to 17.
Okay, so you're asking about Special Services in the City Secretary? Is that correct? Okay.
306.
Yes. The Special Services there are paid to a vendor called MuniCode, and they, Brenda, you can jump in here, but they update our ordinances. And so every time we change an ordinance, we have to pay them to update that. And so we're, it's a, you know, we're estimating how many ordinances we think will change and how many updates we think we'll have to have there.
And that's basically the only service that does that, isn't it?
I believe so. They're not many, but we've been, okay, and we've been with MuniCode for a long time, right?
I don't know if rates ever change with others, but just, I see MuniCode everywhere. Okay, any other questions on page one? How about page two? Again, Special Services and Mr. Hayes, is this for, in addition to what you're talking about in your department for prosecuting, this is for, what, the 48,000?
The 48,000 is completely the Municipal Court prosecution.
That's what that is?
Correct.
Any other questions? Page three, again, Administration, we've got Special Services. Is that, I was wondering where Audit and Playhouse 2000 specifically come in?
Comes in at the very end, on last page, I think. But it says 306, Special Services is Engineering and Consultative Fees, Laboratory and Unclassified Services, including Legal Services.
Yeah, Special Services is kind of a catch-all. There's a bunch of things in there. And we are upgrading to a new general ledger system in August, and that's one of the things we're going to do, is break that account out into specific, like, you know, what type of special service. So next year, you'll be able to see it easier, but...
Because, see, in 804, Amy, in the Administration, you go from 98,000 down to 4,200. So I didn't know.
Right. And so, yeah, the difference there is, in fiscal year 16, Mr. Davis was our interim city manager, and he was a contract employee paid out of Special Services rather than salary. So we won't have that recurring in fiscal year 17. In fiscal, I mean, in fiscal year 18. In fiscal year 18, we do have 4,200 budgeted for newsletter printing, and that was what we spoke about previously.
Yes. Okay.
That was actually a budget amendment in the current year to move money out of salaries to Special Services.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, we moved money from salaries down to Special Services for a contract employee, correct.
And I presume the same in planning?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. The Vehicle Allowance and Human Resources, is that for one employee?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, what vehicles do we have in service for Administration owned by the city?
Just one.
We have one pool vehi, pool vehicle that's shared by everybody.
A sedan? A sedan. It's a sedan, right, and then...
It's a small SUV, and that expense is charged out to General Operations Department.
Okay. Page four. I presume the Special Services that we're not budgeting was probably for the recruiting of the city's manager, okay, or something.
Which one?
I'm sorry, it's 805, Special Services, on page four.
That's actually something else.
Yeah, that was actually some money related to consulting fees for benefits, and we've moved that to the Benefit Trust Fund, which is a completely different fund. So that's the change there.
Okay. Interesting. Anything else? I didn't have anything else on four. Page five.
What in Special Services and Finance, a very little number, $150?
Yeah. That is for document shredding.
Cool. Hey, I'll do that for that.
Be careful, that's a good job.
Run over a few times with the vehicle. Okay. Let's see, we're now in IT. I noticed there were some reductions there. Software maintenance, telephone service, network services, and office equipment. About $40,000 there less overall. So that's nice, Charvie, wherever you are.
Counsel, Mayor Counsel, no, that was just negotiating our current contracts for a lower fee. So that's how we got the reduction there.
For you. What's Special Services here?
Special Service is our web host, our website provider, the hosting for the website, and also the hosting for Code Enforcement software that Development Services use.
And what's PEG Operations?
Your TV. PEG is actually our Tom Warner Channel, or Spectrum Channel 2. It's our Public Education and Government Channel that we currently support and push out data or information.
Okay. Any other questions by Council? If not, on page six, Municipal Court. It's very little, $1,000 increase, 2.6% overall, not a whole lot changed there. Any questions by Council? If not, on page seven, we have Kerbel Shrinor Park. You anticipate using more water and sewer? Right there.
Yeah. Ashley, can you come up and comment on the condition of the water out there?
That was a correct observation. We are budgeting based on our past trend usage. Our water infrastructure in the park is our original infrastructure. It has a lot of holes in the system. We lose a lot of water throughout the holes. It's basically, has a lot of pinholes in it. So that's something that, a project that we're going to be looking on to overtaking, to redo in the future. Something we'll be coming to budget with.
Okay. So this basically repairs, we're having leaks and things here. Everything else is about, let's see, 4%? No, let's see, 8%. What was the big jump overall there? 34,000 increase in your budget. I guess mostly salaries and benefits, huh? I don't see any other egregious changes except the city garage. And that's not a lot either. Only from 16 it is. We have some vehicles, I guess, need maintenance. Okay. Page eight is Police Department. We're increasing our travel and training. I guess we're continuing, Chief, to have training for our new cadets or recruits?
That's correct. And we have an increased personnel count and staffing over the previous years, where we filled positions that were not filled before. So that accounts for an increase in travel and training that has to take place on a yearly basis for officers.
So that's across the board. That's for all?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
What about the certification, certification pay? What's going on there?
Actually, I'd looked at that as well, but that is not correct. What has ended up happening is there is a, under Other Pay, that $50,000 under Other Pay is for the investigative services stipend for investigators, both on the proactive and reactive side. And that was apparently rolled into that $91,000 that you're looking at. So that $51,000, that $50,000 is actually from another line item at, on, in 14, 014.
Wait, so 014 should say $50,000, but 012 should say something less than $91,000?
Absolutely. 012 should be in the $46,000 range.
So there's a little money to pay for that 1%.
Good, good, good.
Okay.
What is Network Services to the Police Department? How did it become 0?
Network Services?
Yes.
When...
I'm sorry, 311?
Well, you've already jumped a page on this.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, before we jump a page, can we do 206 on Instruments Apparatus Maintenance? Was that because of our new Body Cam equipment or something? It's at the end of page, bottom of page eight. It's 813206, Apparatus Maintenance.
The increases there are based on watch card, in-car repair that was, that we needed to add in, that were not there last year. There are also iPad mounting kits for when we replace cars. That hardware needs to be, needs to be replaced in those cars that are coming into backfill units that are going out of service. So that, and in conjunction with that, there's a repeater maintenance, $200 for three repeater maintenance that we had not budgeted in before. Those repeaters are necessary for the communications, emergency communications within the city. And those, each of those repeater sites need to have maintenance performed on them every certain, every couple of years. So that's what that addition is for.
And the Body Camera Software is in 217. Let me see that.
That's $27,300 for that maintenance agreement.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, page nine, George, you had something?
Yeah, just about the Network Services. What, it went away, I guess?
Yeah. 311.
I'm sorry.
That, actually, those line items were moved to 402. That is our TECLids access for, for, for the officer certifications, LEEDs online, which is... Leeds Online, which is, uh, a, a program that we utilize for tracking, uh, pawn shop slips and, uh, precious metals transactions, Lexi, Nexus, and Accurate. All of that was included in that line item last year. And that has all been moved to four oh two.
And on your prisoner support, chief, are we anticipating not arresting as many or have they reduced the price or?
No, they haven't reduced the price. It's still forty-five dollars a day for city prisoners. Uh, there's, there's that charge at least once for every city prisoner that we put in. Um, and we're not projecting that there's going to be a decrease in the number of arrests. Uh, it's, we come, we've come up with that, uh, that estimate based on historical, uh, our historical, uh, data over several years period of time.
They probably won't hit the fifty-four thousand this year. It's just some conservative estimating.
That's what I was wondering. And do we know that for a fact from the county? I don't know when the last time they had an increase, or they're not done with their budget.
We haven't heard a word.
I, and I, I'm pretty confident that I would have had a conversation with the sheriff if there was any intent to increase prison support.
Okay, and on dues and subscriptions again on four oh two, was there something we added?
Yeah.
Yes.
That line, network services.
Network services, we moved down there.
Three eleven. That's right. Okay, and I noticed, uh, let's see, I'm, I don't have any more for the chief unless anybody else does. Um, fire, I noticed that we have, uh, less budgeted for fuel and oil. I noticed that in some departments, we had a decrease and a couple, we had an increase. So I don't know if fuel prices have gone down or what, just looking generally over all the departments. But it's not a huge deal at all, but I notice you reduced your budget there. It's actually fuel and oil supplies.
One oh four.
One oh four.
One oh four, at the bottom of.
Yeah, there, there was actually a decrease, I think, in fuel costs and we're provided the projected cost by finance on those numbers.
Okay. Like I said, some departments had increase, that's just increase in number of calls, I guess. Light and power, you had a reduction there. And special services, you had a reduction there. Um, special services, chief, on three, on eight two one, in seventeen, of course, it's a lot more than in sixteen. What did, is this the new, um, firm that we hired to do the collections?
In three oh six, eight twenty-one, the special services is actually for our, um, physicals we do every two years. And then we do lipid tests on the firefighters where we check the cholesterol and different things.
So i- if fiscal year seventeen may end up different than what is estimated here as well?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, your department went down about sixty-seven thousand overall. So anybody else have any questions for chief? If not, we can move on to solid waste. Thank you. Why was the, what's our anomaly in the seventeen budget and estimated on salaries and wages and solid waste?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The, we moved, uh, one of our employees back, they, when we talked about, um, implementing a mowing crew last year. We moved this individual, all the, all the recycle workers into the mowing crew. We needed, um, we found that that was a little short sighted. We needed some boots on the ground to help with our contractor, um, responding to trash calls and, and helping educate the people with brush and things like that. And so, uh, we moved that employee back into the solid waste department. And so that's the, that's what, that's his salary.
So you moved an employee from?
It was a mowing, uh, the mowing service, um, ride away maintenance.
That's a, uh, oh oh one, eight two five. But where was he from?
Department eight fifty-four, parks maintenance.
Parks, from parks.
It's all within the general fund and there was no headcount change overall, just moving from one department to another within the general fund.
I see, okay, okay.
So what, what created the, the upswing from the seventeen estimated and back down to the supposed three in that salary?
From forty-six almost down to thirty-one?
Yeah, yeah.
There was a change in.
Yes, there was a, we created a different position back to public works and there was a change in salary. So that's, that's where the difference came, came into play. And I think there's also some, uh, it happened in between a fiscal year. So there were some numbers that got moved around.
You like had a higher salary person doing a function that you've since decided needs to be a real function separate, right?
So that should be reflected somewhere in our expenses for parks. We should, in the estimated, it should be somewhat less than what we originally had if we moved one over, right?
Probably the fact is.
We hadn't got there yet. Yeah.
In all blends.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Page eleven is, um, here's one of those times when solid waste fuel cost went up. And, and what's, what I'd like to know about that. Yes, it did. And if we're using Republic, what, why is that increase proposed?
That individual that brought, was brought back into solid waste drives, drives the city normally to pick up different things. And that is his fuel cost for the, to operate his vehicle.
So when we?
He, he also does the dead animal pickup, um, which was a big, was part of the reason why it didn't fit really well in the park maintenance area. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, uh, work that's done throughout the city and picking up dead animals. And so he makes rounds every day picking those up.
The reason why the current year in budget and estimate is not higher because, is because that this was probably being paid for over in parks.
Yeah.
This piece of it during those years.
We just brought a salary back.
So we're just going to move something over again, okay?
I wonder why we, why we keep street and drainage maintenance line at zero?
I had that too. Why do we keep it on there? It's two oh seven.
For the solid waste?
It's eight twenty-five, two oh seven, yes.
Yeah, we can take those zero lines out.
That's okay.
Okay.
When we get to the final budget, but in the streets department budget, you'll see money budgeted in that two oh seven.
Right, yeah, good. Right. And then what's special services in this one?
Special services is the hazardous household, um, cleanup day. We also have the recycle center, um, drop off that we're paying Republic for the, for that service. Um, so special events, uh, e-waste and then also tires. We do different, different events throughout the year for.
But that's not their contract amount we pay Republic?
No.
Where's that?
We actually, Republic, um, gets the fees that we charge your, um, our customers. So when you pay for trash on your, um, bill each month, we pass that money through to Republic and that's the money that they receive.
And then they give us the eleven dollars a ton for the, that goes over the scales. That's what comes back.
I guess postage, we had, uh, when we did the circulars for the, uh, change out of our cans and we did public education there. Are we going to do, is that including, did I see somewhere where July, they're going to change out some cans? That was on our website, I think, for a while.
They were looking at changing out the cans. I haven't heard back from Republic yet if they've selected a new one or not, a more durable can. Have you, David?
Uh, they, they're in the process of look, of corrective, looking for more, uh, durable container that would require less replacements or repairs. So that, they're still working on that. It, it'll happen in phases. They can't replace, uh, what, sixteen thousand carts? Uh, so that, that'll be a huge capital expense, but they'll replace them, you know, in, in certain phases.
So you don't expect we'll need any public education next year on anything?
We'll continue to, to do our part, yes, through press releases or, or we have some, uh, information coming out that we, uh, will send out, um, with regards to recycling. And that's funded through an ACOG grant that, that'll cover that.
Well, I saw we didn't have any ACOG grant listed on here.
Not yet.
Any revenue.
Uh, that might happen in twenty eighteen. And as Amy mentioned earlier, that can change if we do get a grant.
Gotcha, okay.
But right now, I, I'm not receiving anything so far.
We can also use the newsletter that we want to do to get out.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah. Um, who do we pay for animal carcass disposal? Is that, are we paying ourselves?
Internals, the interns.
Yeah, okay.
That's just the fee for us to dispose of the animal in the landfill.
Right, yes.
In the landfill.
So we'll get a surcharge back out of that.
And then what are the other charges?
Tire disposal, what do you mean?
Oh.
Four oh five.
That, that's for us to, for every ton, okay, so we receive eleven dollar surcharge. But then every ton that crosses the scale, we ought, we also have to pay T C Q a certain fee per ton. And that's done on a quarterly basis. So it, it can range anywhere from ninety-five cents a ton to, I've seen as high as like a dollar ten. So it just depends on what's coming in over the scales.
Is that a new thing or did we just put it somewhere else in sixteen?
That used to be in, in three oh six. And I think we moved it over to four oh five. We did that last year, I think. So this, you'll see a difference in there.
That's amazing. So we're paying the state a tax for our own landfill.
Yes, every landfill does that. But then that's what generates the funding for these grants from ACOG. So they, they allocate those funds. They kind of, you know, you still want to apply because you want to get some of that money back. So that's what we've been doing in, in the past.
Okay.
Very efficient.
That's why they bring off.
The flow charts get really tricky. Okay. Anybody else have any more questions for solid waste? How about fire marshal? It's about a three percent overall increase, about a six thousand dollar for the department. Again, I think that we are assuming that nothing's going to change on, um, insurance, but we know that that is probably not going to be the case. Is that right?
What we're looking at now, Mayor, from the numbers that I've gotten, very preliminary, is that it's not going to be a, it's a huge increase. And we might actually be able to absorb it, but don't know for sure yet. We'll be able to talk some more about that in our next budget workshop.
That's group insurance, you're talking about two oh seven. Yeah, because they had anticipated that, I remember Kim had told us last year, we don't know what next year's going to do. It may, we got a really good deal last year, but. So we'll, that answers that. Any other questions? Emergency medical services, did, did we lose an employee in, in, uh, EMS for it to go down twenty-eight thousand?
Uh, yes, we did. We, um, lost one of our, um, billing specialists.
That's right, because we, that's what I was wondering.
Correct, because we outsourced, yes.
We did this, okay. So that will stay that way.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Wearing apparel, somebody's not going to get clothes. Uh, is that again?
Some of the changes in the wearing apparel was it was moved over to fire since that was actually the bunker gear. So that was more of a fire cost with eight twenty-one rather than eight thirty.
I feel a lot better about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Special services here, what is that representing?
That is the, uh, the increase to that is with intermedics. It was, uh, that is where the intermedics cost, you had the additional hundred and thirty.
Right, so we have a partial year, a few months, um, this year, but next year it will be a full year of their services. And we pay them ba- a percentage based on dollars collected. So, you know, we have to receive the money before we pay them anything. So it's a percent of dollars collected.
And that in the future will end up being its own line item? Or is that going to be one of them?
Yes, it will be in the future, yes.
That's good.
Dues and subscriptions also end up a lot.
So recertifications, I think that's moved from ten to.
Our, um, recertifications for the Department of Health, uh, State Health Services was originally in travel and training and has since been moved to four oh two to better capture on the line item, about fifteen hundred dollars.
Right. And, and every year as part of the budget process, um, when we're going through line item by line item, we try to look for things that maybe are kind of miscategorized and need to be put someplace else to be more consistent with our accounting and with the other departments. So that's one of the things we found this year.
I think training is a lot more self-descriptive, but. Yes. Mm-hmm, would you like a break? Okay. At eleven forty-five, we will break for about five, seven minutes. If we want to continue on, we're, we've got a number of pages more. I have a number of yellow marks, uh, in the rest of my budget. And so does Ms. Summerlin. So we can do one of several things. He suggested he can order lunch. We can go on. Um, I know we didn't schedule till past twelve, only until twelve. I don't.
Are we allowed to go past?
We are, we can. It, but I didn't know if anybody else had other schedules because we only scheduled till noon.
I'd rather.
You're not shaking your head? Okay. Rather go ahead and get it all out of the way?
Yeah.
Okay, and just.
I'm okay at two o'clock.
Okay.
So do you want us to order some lunch?
I don't care for any.
Make it a working lunch?
I don't care for anything.
Okay.
The, the growing boy always does, but he can probably hold down. You want some chewing gum? No kidding. I'm, I appreciate it. Are we okay? Are we okay then, Council, to just keep, keep going? Okay, as is. All right, um, on page thirteen then. Let's see, we had a, had about fifty percent reduction whatever, in wearing apparel. I don't know that that's worth noting, but. EMS, we already did it, transferred over to the other one, okay. And we already did special services dues and subscriptions. Okay, so we're on fourteen. Planning. We. Where are we on that, on, on, as far as employees? I know we, we lost Trent, but we have a contract, but we, we counted on the increase from sixteen to seventeen because of adding the full-time planner. Is that right? And now we're just adjusting downward a bit?
I'm going to see if.
Get the interim planner, please.
Yeah, you got some questions around the planning department on page fourteen. When you look at salaries going from a hundred and eleven thousand to a hundred and seventy-seven? That was the inclusion, I believe, of G I S moving into that, uh, functional area. So a position was moved over.
Okay, from sixteen to seventeen. We moved G I S, okay. And then there's a slight reduction, but we don't know why.
As Mr. McDaniel mentioned earlier, we'll be adjusting that as we formulate this new.
Who, okay, staffing.
Where's the interim planner?
Down there in special services.
Yeah, but it has an estimate of seventeen being zero.
Yeah. Right now, um, that money is basically still in the salaries line item. We have a process that we go through to make any budget line item transfers where everything has to be filled out and signed and approved. And we just haven't gotten that one through yet. But the money will be transferred from salaries down to special services to pay for the interim planner.
Okay. Any other questions on fourteen for planning? If not, building services. We added a vehicle allowance there. Did we do that in seventeen? I didn't know if that was for the interim or?
The, um, vehicle allowance was added in seventeen, um, but it was, it was added after the, um, budget was, um, was completed, yeah.
And it was for?
It's for the director of, um, building services.
So that's just something that you decided, Mark, that will continue?
That was before I got here, Mayor.
Uh-huh. Well, obviously it's something that it, it had changed, so. You evaluate or are you good with that or?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it in terms of the, um, when you look at the kind of driving he does around and, and monitoring all that he's gotten on his plate, yes.
Okay. That's what I was wondering if it had to do with the activity out, outside of the office, which I presume that it did. And special services actually was reduced there from sixteen. What did we do any different, I wonder, in sixteen?
Building department, special services, the majority of that's going to be third-party, uh, plan review on large commercial projects. So that fluctuates depending on our volume of large commercial project, whether it's an Avery building or a hospital or whatever. So that's where that's, uh, where that one falls.
So we talked about if it's. So we talked about if it's a project that we hire Freezer Nichols for, it goes under the project expense. But if it's a department, is this...
This is plan review that they would do normally in-house. So for example, when we hire this new, if you approve the new inspector, they'll be doing more plan review, and we wouldn't have to job it out. But in the past, when they had so much commercial activity in sixteen, they needed some help and they were dropping a lot of that work out. So it's really operating expense rather than pipelines expense associated with the project, which would be something like Freezer Nichols would do.
Depends on the complexity of the commercial project.
Right.
And it's also completely offset essentially by the...
You recharge it, yes, to the customer.
It fluctuates in sync with each other.
We just hadn't had any of those projects in seventeen, correct? And don't anticipate, okay. Anything else for planning or building services? Code compliance, you know, should George be in here on this part of it? Since you have a relative in the department?
I was asked about that. I don't, I think the discussion is okay, right?
Yeah, because we're not talking about that position.
We're not approving our... Yeah, okay. Overtime, what are we, with the added employee, we added one in seventeen, so why is it more? Are we, what is so demanding on overtime for code compliance? I guess I didn't realize, are they out on weekends?
That would be normally where we're having festivals or food products in the park for our health department. And go out on weekends and whatnot to do inspections.
So primarily health department for those? Okay. Interesting. Any other questions on that page? Page sixteen, let's see. Again, we have special services from six thousand to thirty-one thousand.
Yes, and that is for the building abatement, substandard structure.
What about fuel and oil supplies?
Just the price of fuel went down, I guess, because that's what we...
Yeah, the finance plugs those numbers in, of course.
And we had also, like, we do give a price per gallon, but to estimate it, and then the department tells us how many gallons they think they'll use based on their actual mileage. And then we do look at their historicals, so you can see in sixteen, you know, they didn't use very much, and so we went...
We added another vehicle with the position this year. We added another vehicle because we added another code enforcement officer this year. In the previous year, we did not have that vehicle in that department.
Yeah, so we had updated some for seventeen, but then we're not really seeing a lot of fuel increase. So when we weren't sure with the new position, how much she would be driving, that kind of thing. So now for eighteen, we're taking it back down to more what we're seeing the actual usage as in seventeen.
Y'all ready to move on to tennis center? Not anything too significant there. I don't have any questions, anyone for tennis? Aquatics, on the travel and training, what would be the additional? Ashley?
Sure. For aquatics, travel and training, we added an additional, or upgraded a position in our recreation budget that also helps oversee aquatics, so that's some additional training for them as well. And we added back in the cost of printing lifeguard books, that's something that we took out last year. We found that really wasn't conducive to the training course. And so we have two employees that will be attending aquatics-related training specifically for aquatics.
So that three people overall had training, or will have training?
Two, two for aquatic specifically, out of this budget. It also includes our, all of our fees it takes to train our lifeguards.
And they pay that back though, right?
Correct. But they do get reimbursed at the end of the summer if they qualify. It's an incentive that we give for our guards.
That's right.
But they do pay the training fee upfront.
And it looks like we estimated a reduction in the cost of the chemicals, but we haven't seen it. That's one oh three.
We, actually, we increased that from our FY seventeen budget. That was budgeted at ten thousand.
I noticed it went down in twenty seventeen, and now it's back up.
Correct, yeah. It's based on the trend and what we're actually spending for our chemicals.
Cool.
It also includes our first aid supplies. It also falls under that line item.
Other supplies kind of went up drastically.
Correct. So this covers restocking some of our lifeguard equipment, rescue tubes, our swim lessons equipment. We have kickboards that we're buying. And then the bulk of that was replacing our patio furniture. And we needed to get some more lawn chairs. We did some of it this year, and then we're doing the second phase of that, we're asking for next year. And then we are looking to replace our picnic tables, going from the wood to the recycled plastic tables due to maintenance.
And what are we going to be doing maintenance on? I know the pool itself has issues, but is this building, is that mostly for the pool itself?
That's for the entire facility. Light bulbs, building maintenance of bathrooms, anything that has to do with maintenance, that's pretty much what it falls under for the pool.
So is it one big job we're going to do, or we just expect everything to cost a lot?
Under buildings and structures? That's...
It looks like we're just kind of a major overhaul there with supplies, building instruments and all that. We're just kind of replenishing, restocking, refurbishing.
Correct, correct. And then we also budgeted for repairing the padding around the baby pool. We're starting to see the wear and tear, it's coming up, so we need to redo that. We budgeted that at thirty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm, thirty-six. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Paul? Park maintenance, is overtime, does that have to do with events? Or does that have to do with...
Majority of the overtime budget is for the events and also our weekend rounds. We have staff work over the weekends to round, to provide services in our parks. They clean the bathrooms, they take out the trash, so they get paid overtime for that as well.
So we're doing a lot more in eighteen than we did sixteen, maybe two people.
Getting rid of temporary help.
And I believe that that increase also compared to FY sixteen is they're actually getting paid overtime versus the comp time.
Okay.
And that temporary help that you mentioned, that's where we're getting rid of those seasonal and part-time positions and moving it into one full-time position. So you see an increase in salaries and wages and a decrease in temporary help.
Okay, eighteen, anyone have any questions? Our special services, again, we have not very much different than seventeen, but quite a bit different from sixteen. Could you just fill us in on what that all entails?
Sure. And the special services is for our, paying our consultant for, that we have on contract? Mr. Matthews? And it also includes any TDLR inspections that we will do.
So is he staying on?
Yes, he's on contract.
Malcolm is?
Correct.
And he will be for eighteen as well?
Yes, he's budgeted for the FY eighteen budget.
What's his actual function?
He works on special projects, such as the River Trail and Sports Complex. He'll be working on the tennis center project as well, and projects for City Manager's Office.
Because you're full-time now, you've...
Correct.
You're head of the department, so you've been promoted to that. And so I understood that when that happened, we would no longer have Malcolm.
So Malcolm has continued to assist, as Ashley said, in a number of special project functions, particularly related to project management, a lot of which are in our recreation area. But some of them are in additional project areas, such as aquatics feasibility, if council chooses to move forward on that, the tennis center, River Trail, easement acquisition, things of that nature. So a whole host of items that are, you know, outside of the normal realm of our general parks operations.
So he's out there as a project manager on all of these, well, right now to the athletic complex?
We're assisting with those projects.
So I understood it was, he was being kept on originally because the athletic complex was kind of already started. He was going to carry that through, and that, that I understood. But if, as the director, he was also this project manager, why are we still using him instead of, instead of her for those functions?
Because those functions are a different realm from really what Ashley does on day-day operations of parks and recreation. So for instance, we don't typically assign easement acquisitions to Ashley. She doesn't have the time of day to kind of track those pieces down, because she's running, you know, a large personnel operation.
Okay, but Malcolm was doing that as well as project manager when he began the athletic complex, correct?
Malcolm's role has shifted a lot over fiscal year seventeen. As you recall, for a period, probably six months, he was serving as actually interim deputy city manager. So his role throughout this last fiscal year has shifted quite a bit.
But the duties he's providing right now as project management would have been the duties of him as Parks Director, correct? So aren't we really just...
In other words, he was doing both before?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the director was doing both.
And as you recall, we had Ashley as an assistant director during that time,
and was really providing a lot of the operational support, really for most of fiscal year seventeen.
We do not have an assistant director position currently.
That's right.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Mark?
No, not now, but I'm making notes.
Okay, yeah. What is TDLR's? I'd like to have that looked at.
Texas Department of Licensing. Regulations.
Let's see, somebody else is doing the animal carcass disposal, huh?
Correct. So the personnel costs and associated costs were transferred over to Public Works.
Yeah. Yeah, we did. And machinery tools, was that moved somewhere else? I know you're looking at equipment for sure.
In Parks Maintenance. Correct. That was in last year's budget, we purchased two ZTRs. And we do not have it budgeted to, yeah, we're good on equipment. Did not budget to purchase any this year.
So it'll, the other equipment will be specifically in the athletic complex budget?
Correct.
Okay.
They're separate.
And where did we have, oh, it's next, okay. So any more questions? That's about two and a half percent increase there, but athletic complex. The difference in the wages is we're adding what, again?
It's the full-time, twelve-month budgeting for all the positions. They were budgeted at four months for this year for three positions.
Three positions full-time?
It's going to be four total, full-time positions. And three were budgeted in this year's budget for only four months.
Yes. We, okay. The overtime, I presume, would be for the maintenance of the fields in between tournaments or whatever, is that correct?
Correct. It'll be a seven-day-a-week operation.
The light and the power increase on three oh two, I presume, is because we're going to run those, we're going to pay for those lights a full year.
Correct.
For the field lights. Only outside, right? Nothing inside?
Correct.
Okay. Because I don't know when the building's going to be ready, but...
Okay, so, so on...
And the water and sewer will also be the increase in the amount of water we...
For irrigation.
Yeah, and I would think that probably seventeen is conservative. I don't know if that's going to cover it, but...
We, when budgeting for the light and power, what we did was we compared to other cities and other complexes that we thought were comparable to us, and did our best projections based on what we thought our needs would be and where we would land on those.
So on the expenses for the athletic complex, Malcolm had said something different than what I understood it to be when we took a tour, whatever it was, last fall. He had said that he thought all of the utilities, both inside that building and the DBAT building, as well as the field facility, was going to be paid by the city. Is that correct, or no?
No, just the outside.
Just the outside. I believe, I'll have to pull the contract and look at it, but I believe DBAT pays for their utilities inside the building. I'll have to double-check on that.
He had said different, and anyways. I think that was my only, oh, and the other thing is, what's network services here, three eleven?
That is for our fiber and internet services, our IT services.
Ashley, what accounts, what accounts for the big drop in one oh eight other supplies?
Let's see. Okay, so the one oh eight, that's budgeting for our, our premix, our five gallons, and our paint. I'll have to compare that to our FY seventeen budget. Do you have that in?
Yeah, in seventeen, we were spending almost thirty-two thousand dollars for soccer goals.
Soccer goals to purchase, thank you.
One-time expense.
And then overall, this is a question from Mr. Naiman in the audience, but basically, the total expense for the complex in eighteen is being estimated at around five hundred and eighty thousand. But moving forward, because there's some one-time fees and whatnot, moving forward, that previous slide showed something like four hundred and fifty or something thousand is what we expect to be the annual maintenance.
Stabilize, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so...
There's several places, machinery, tools, and equipment goes up twenty thousand. There's different places, it looks like, for, of course, chemical and medical, that's different. Small tools and equipment, you've got an increase from eleven thousand to twenty-seven five. Then below machinery, tools, and equipment, you've got another category, forty-eight to sixty-eight, another twenty thousand. So is that, how do we break that down? Both of them say tools, one oh two and five oh four.
So one oh two, one oh two is our small tools that are under five hundred, I believe. Five thou, I'm sorry, five thousand. Drill bits, tremors, rakes, shovels, brooms, all of those sorts of pieces of equipment. And then the one oh eight, was that the comparison?
To five oh four.
Oh, five oh four. That is our capital equipment. And that's, we'll be purchasing some one-time equipment in that line item as well, such as the tractor and an aerobator for the tractor. And again, those are one-time capital purchases.
In addition to what we are going to be considering this next...
That's correct. We broke up the equipment over two fiscal years.
Two fiscal years.
I think because this is the first year we're going to really be operating out here, that we're going to just need to watch it closely as we go along. I think people make their best estimates. But historically, the first year or two of something new like this may come in way under or way over, or maybe right on, who knows?
It's a lot to make up. All right. Recreation, any more questions for that category? If not, recreation, explain to me Recreation Department. Have we had that division before, that name of Recreation?
We have, and this division oversees all of our special events, our athletic programs and recreation programs that we offer. In this, in this budget, you'll see an increase in the salaries. That's because we upgraded the Recreation Coordinator position that at one time used to be full-time, went to a part-time position, and then now we upgraded it back to a full-time position with our increased programming.
Mr. Gordon, is that his position?
That was, no, that was the, Ms. Ledesma, the Recreation Coordinator.
And we're still using temporary help, though?
Correct. That is for the box office position at the Calothe Theater. That's partially grant-funded.
So make sure, I always want to make sure I'm understanding that whole circuit. We get a ten thousand dollar grant, we pay thirteen thousand eighty, the three thousand eighty comes out of the general fund.
Correct.
And again, we have, uh, twice the amount in travel and training that we actually budgeted for.
And that's because we had that secondary position go to full-time to allow for some professional development and training for that position.
For one position?
For the one position, we now have two.
That twenty-nine hundred will be for training for one person. We had one in seventeen, we'll have one in eighteen?
For the travel and training, we have two, two positions are budgeted there for travel and training.
And they'll both be getting some training.
Correct.
And special services again, we go from fifteen to twenty-six.
Okay, so this one, um, is because we moved around the fireworks. I believe it was budgeted in one oh eight before and we just, uh, moved that to, uh, special services in three oh six. Um, we also are, uh, increased our, um, uh, associated expenses with the daddy-daughter dance. We're at maximum capacity of our current facility, so we're looking to expand that, um, to offer, uh, more, um, ticket sales, more attendance. And there's associated expenses with that as well.
So that's to rent a facility?
Correct, rent a facility and the increase in, um, the food costs and the catering and everything else. So we can allow for about, uh, five hundred people versus, um, about two, two hundred people that we're maxed out about now.
And where's the revenue for that reflected?
That would be in the P and R programs.
P and R?
Parks and Recreation programs.
And the revenue detail under? Let's see, page three, let's see, nope, Parks and Rec? Six, four, three, three, okay, I see it. Income was eight thousand. And so we'll budget twenty-six thousand for the?
What page?
Rentals, um, on page three, under, uh, general fund revenue detail at the front of your book. Where did I just, uh, line item six, four, three, three in revenue. There's eight thousand dollars in revenue.
And on the three oh six, um, twelve thousand of that twenty-six thousand is for fireworks. So it's not all daddy-daughter dance in there.
And let's see, that Mamacita's does that donation, right? So is that offset somewhere today?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's under grant revenue, um, six, five, zero, four.
On page four.
They give us twelve thousand, so that's just an offset there, okay. So it's, both of those are offsets really.
Correct, we, we need to show the correlating expense, that's why it's in there.
Yeah, that's right, twelve and eight. Okay, well, not actually. Okay, and advertising increase on?
Yes, what, what that is, is a ten thousand dollar, um, uh, cost for the printing and the mailing of our individual activity guides. We would like to mail those to all of our water customers. That way, um, it gets out into the community. Right now, what we do is we deliver them to wherever we can around town that will accept them and deliver them to the schools before the school, um, gets out for the year. But, um, we would like to be able to maximize our resource and capitalize on as many of our citizens as possible by doing a mail-out.
We're, we're looking at that too as far as other options.
Yeah, okay.
Some of you have talked to me about putting it out more often, uh, almost like you would have a, a college catalog. And maybe, again, using the newspaper as opposed to direct mail, so.
That's good.
We'll be looking at other options.
Okay, that's good. Okay, um, is that all for her? Uh, engineering, are you ready to move to engineering? Uh, it's about, let's see, we have eighty-three thousand increase there, uh, overall.
A lot of it's in overtime.
Hmm, and could you help us with some of that?
This is where that new position is.
Most of the costs attributed to the increase in, in our department is the salary, uh, of the new position. Uh, one thing we also wanted to bring back was a, a little more of the overtime. Uh, so with the added position, uh, we have that overtime increase as well. I, I, I know you're probably looking at the fiscal seventeen, uh, so I'm trying to see what, uh, we had four, four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Uh, Todd cut a lot of our overtime for the comp plan last year. Overtime for, for us was one of the items that got, uh, got cut because we only have one, uh, construction inspector currently as hourly wage. Next year, we're looking at having two, maybe three, uh, if, if we bring Alex back in to, uh, to hourly wages.
And that, that need is specifically for what?
Uh, this is anything from a necessity, uh, outside of our standard working hours, eight to five, uh, for any infrastructure improvements, whether it's a, a private development, uh, you know, doing, needing a, a water inspection, uh, or, or any of our projects. It basically, uh, is, is refunded by the contractors. They, they have, uh, a fee, a construction inspection fee for overtime that, uh, I believe goes directly into the line item. I'm not sure, that, that's a finance question as to how, how that works, but, uh, essentially, we charge the, the contractors because we don't, we don't really want them to work outside of normal operating hours. There's some things that we can't control.
So that basically is a service to them to expedite their position?
Yes.
And they refund that?
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhere, okay.
So, and we, we have a minimum charge on weekends to, to try to alleviate any weekend work. Uh, you know, there's, like I said, there's some things that we just can't control, some, you know, wastewater plant, any work out there, uh, a, a lot of times happens after midnight. Uh, and, and so with that, we want to make sure that our guys are, are getting, uh, the, the correct, um, reimbursement for, for their time.
And again, just given the uptake and activity that we see on the private side, we've just been a little bit anticipatory as far as what we think we will see, uh, in requested activity.
And as long as that's passed along and it's for their convenience, that's no problem.
Yeah, and it's specifically on the revenue side in account six, two, three, one, building construction permits. We have ten thousand dollars budgeted there that would cover the eight thousand dollars in overtime shown in the, um, engineering budget.
Okay, good, you made note of that. Any other questions? If not, streets and drainage? Again, we've got overtime, which kind of, uh, is that for animals pickup or? It's actually less than what was budgeted last year, we don't know, but is that probably also for part, uh, events?
Events, the, the parades and, and, um, Fourth of July type events that, that the guys participate in. Cold weather, freezing, um, ice events, flooding.
Trees down.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
Uh, and again, the other, only other thing I had was special services. It's a, quite different than fiscal year seventeen, but not, it, but less than sixteen, so. I know, I think that sixteen might have been fugro. I'm not sure when we heard fugro, but what do we anticipate will be?
The, when we get to a, a bad part, a, a point in the street, we hire a geotech engineer to come out and look at that. If it's a, if it's a place that's failed year after year after year, we want, we want to be able to, uh, identify what the problem is, get a geotech engineer out and, um, help us identify how to fix that instead of just repairing the same spot over and over and over. It's a, it's a fee, fee for them and maybe, uh, traffic control as well.
Is this where we pay for the traffic studies?
Yes, yeah, we put in twenty thousand dollars for a, um, traffic control study specifically in this line item.
So this is where we would fund things like, where we're looking at clay and shriner and out here by the parking garage and the stoplight that somebody asked about in the downtown and, um, so we've really never budgeted for that because we've never done a lot of it. And so this is to have some seed dollars to do some of that.
Very likely, we won't be able to, we won't spend all of it, but it, but it's there, we need to, okay. And most of the increase courses for them are increase in the program. Any other questions? Uh, let's see, twenty-four again, page twenty-four, general operations.
What, what about, um, library?
Now, did we skip, did I skip the page? Sorry, I did, you're right.
I just wondered what library special services are, it's not that it's changed.
The library special services, um, the majority of that is a program called the McNaughton Book Program. It allows us to bring in additional copies of the very popular authors. Your John Grisham, your Pattersons, where we see a high demand. And that way, we lease the book for a year and then we can return it for the McNaughton to them. So that way, we can utilize our book fund in five-twelve for items, additional items that will stay permanently on our shelves, but so that we can still address the demand for those very popular authors. The other portion includes our public performance license and then a tech share database fee. The tech share program allows us to purchase sixty-eight databases through the state for approximately nine hundred dollars. Out of that, the databases themselves are valued at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So it's a great savings for the community.
Our software maintenance agreement, um, was that a contract that we already had in place or is this a new one or?
Um, we are ending a seven-year contract, um, for our software, our, our database maintenance. Um, and that is where we're looking at implementing next year a new system. At, that's where we saw the increase in cost, that's the implementation fee. But, um, we're looking at different vendors where in the following years, we can see a reduction in the annual maintenance fees.
Will that go out, request for your, um, proposals on that?
No, they're actually coming in lower, um, below the threshold for an RFP. I spoke with finance on that, um, but we're getting those numbers now and hope to bring something to council soon.
We took out land maintenance, was there a reason, I don't, was that parks or what's on two oh one?
Two oh one. Okay, that was, thank you, Amy, that was, uh, tree trimming at the Shell Hayes Mansion. Um, we needed to clean up, um, and address some issues with the oaks on the campus. And in the next coming year, under two oh two, we'll have the ball moss maintenance to, um, continue that project.
Is that a spraying?
Yes, they'll come out three times a year to, um, keep the ball moss on those large lovely oaks on the campus. Um, keep the trees healthy for another hundred years.
Any other questions for Ms. Vector? If not, general operations, page twenty-four. Looks like our insurance, uh, premiums are going up there. I think we had some claims, is that, Kim, what happened there?
What line are you on?
I'm sorry, uh, eight, seven, oh, three, oh, seven, three, oh, seven.
Yes, um, if you remember, we had a very bad hail event in twenty sixteen. And, um, we had lots and lots of clients and so now, as a result of claims, the rates go up. Um, if, where we are on that, we had thirty-seven vehicles that were damaged and thirty-nine buildings that were damaged. We've, um, have ten vehicles still to re, be repaired, um, because the schedules on those were so far out to get the hail damage repaired. And then we have twelve buildings that are still, um, looking to be repaired soon. Yeah, all from twenty, May twenty sixteen.
I remember that. You think it would be comparable, how often do you go out and do comparisons?
Um, well, we have not done an RFP for liability since I've been here, but, um, and our rates have been really, really good, um, just comparable to other cities. Um, I think, uh, with this event, we expected to have an increase, so we may look at going out for an RFP next year. If we need to.
Next year, Mia?
Yes, uh, this year, our, our insurance is through TML, Texas Municipal League.
This year, every year it's been or?
Yes, uh-huh.
Boy, they do everything, don't they?
And most of it very competitive.
Let's see. The audit, uh, fee is separate from tax services, correct?
Yeah, and tax services, um, that's, um, basically what we pay, well, two things. Um, what we pay to Kerr County for collecting our property taxes. And then also, um, what we pay to KerrCAD for doing all the value assessments for us.
And actually, we did it with the KISD before, right? And that's actually gone down through the county, isn't that correct? Okay.
Uh, it's gone up a little bit. It's gone up a little bit, um, through the county. And then, yeah, and it's a percent of, um, of this, uh, of the, yeah, dollars collected. So as dollars collected, it, um, go up, that will go up as well.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, let's see, we said, I thought that our audit was like seventy-eight thousand, but this is arbitrage. But I don't know what all that is included in that, but this is?
Yeah, it includes our annual audit, um, at sixty-nine thousand, um, and then it also includes arbitrage. So we have to, um, have an outside firm, um, look at basically the money that we get from our bonds and make sure that we're not issuing bonds just so we can invest that money and make more money investing it than we're paying our bond, you know, um, as interest expense, so that's something we're required to do each year. We also have, um, continuing disclosure, um, related to debt in there that, um, First Southwest does for us. And we've also added five thousand dollars for a fraud hotline, um, to this line item. And, um, that's, that's something that our auditors have recommended, um, the last couple of years, um.
Say it again, five thousand dollars for the hotline?
For a fraud hotline, correct.
Hadn't been used, all right?
Well, it's not implemented yet, but, um, it will, will be soon.
We just signed a contract for that and we're going to launch a new website by the end of this month, right, Charvie? Okay, um, and so under the transparency tab, there'll be a way to get to that. Link over to a third party.
And then we can win an award for transparency.
We've already applied for it.
There you go, see? I knew that. Okay, so that's the extra there. Any other questions? Well, I think that just about brings us to the end. Actually, our personnel count, I thought we were at three hundred and this shows less, some, a lot less than that.
This is the general fund only, so there's water and sewer, garage and golf employees. And actually, our general fund count is one less than that. Um, what you're looking at, um, has one, too many employees in EMS because we reduced that EMS employee count, so it's down to two fifty-four.
Anybody have any questions over that category of the general fund personnel? How about, uh, debt service fund? I think Mr. McDaniel went over that pretty well with us.
I wondered what special services is, eight, ninety-four, three, oh, six.
In the debt service fund?
That's a paying agent fee that they charge us when we make the payments.
We have to pay to pay. Makes perfect sense to me. I'm too old for this. Anything you'd like to point out, Mr. McDaniel, about the, any, anything on the debt service?
Uh, no, ma'am, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, and you said you're not going to do any refunding or consider that, no, no need to do that. Landfill closure fund, we just do each year, correct? Let's see, if we were making payments, were we not, Ms. Yarba, on also towards a fire truck? Is that going to be on the capital?
That's in our debt service, it's in, on the next headhunter, it's been under expenses. And the Calo Foundation loan, that shows where you're, and the payment is for the fire truck. What, what's true of your debt service?
Right.
Four, four, six.
Four twenty-six.
Kind of cut off, but eight, nine, four, four, two, six, dash, we'll see Calo Foundation loan.
Oh, I, yeah, I knew that one.
Seven went down.
That was the ladder truck, but weren't we setting aside for a new engine, fire engine?
You're talking about the budget transfer that was done? You're talking about the budget transfer that was done this year?
We have that in the asset replacement fund. And that's coming out of the general fund. That was part of the transfers out that we talked about earlier.
Okay, that you said we already did the seven hundred and fifty this year.
Right. And we had already partially funded also in this current year's budget. And next year, we're gonna be funding because we're gonna have two years in a row. We need fire trucks.
Okay, yeah. So we just added two. And that's the list you're gonna put together for us? Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions for anybody?
I have sort of a general question. A place I work for, the admin function of the business is paid for equally by each department in some sort of an indirect payback. I think you mentioned before, because the utility fund does some of that. Do they do a hundred percent of it? Or how does the... How does that get dispersed? Or even functions like IT where they're providing services?
So that was, yeah, that was something that we took a new, fresh look at this year. So we were doing, we looked at those administrative functions such as, you know, city admin, human resources, finance, IT, those kind of things. And we were allocating just some flat percentages of those departments to the utility fund as their fee. This year, we went in and looked at each department individually and tried to come up with a better measure of how much of admin's time is really used by the water sewer fund. And so we have different allocations for each department. But for example, like human resources, we're doing an allocation based on percent of FTEs, of full-time employees. So we look at how many employees does the water sewer fund have compared to the total employees and we allocate that percent of the human resources department. For IT, that one was kind of a complicated allocation. But we went through every single line item of software expense and we identified which pieces of software were used specifically for water sewer versus general fund versus the, you know, overall city. And so we broke those out individually. Then we looked at like all of our users on the network. And we got a percentage of how many users are water sewer users versus general fund users. And for other portions of the IT costs, we allocated based on that percent of users for the water sewer fund times a line item in the IT budget.
Are they going to be, or are they already listed as essentially an expense to each department and then a revenue to admin or something like that?
Yeah, what you're talking about is probably like an internal service fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you'd have, and some cities do that, might have a separate IT fund and then go back the departments for those costs. We don't do that here. We just... The only cost allocation we have is back to the utility fund for their portion. And then it's centralized as an expense in the general fund.
Yeah, so it's shown as a transfer out on the water sewer fund and a transfer in on the general fund. But it's not shown for each department individually. It's at the fund level.
And are you talking about like for lights and water and that kind?
I'm talking about things like the city functions, like city manager, for instance, would be a...
Your overhead.
Yeah. And so, you know, in the place I work, it would be dispersed evenly for some...
I don't know if it's a function of size. It seems like more complexity than would tell us anything helpful.
Yeah, that'd be my assessment, is it's just...
At this level.
Yeah. It's... When you get to be really large, then you're gonna have separate funds for a lot of those internal services and charge it back out. With us, it's fairly, fairly simple in terms of our operation.
It's just that it's worth doing water sewer fund because it's a different cost. I mean, it's a different revenue, too.
Okay, as promised, at the end, if there's anybody from the audience that has a couple of questions, if you approach...
I'm Robert Naaman. I want to thank y'all for having this meeting to the public. And I like this format. It's a lot better than being upstairs in that little room there. Just on this topic that we're just discussing, do we have a dollar amount of the administrative costs that are transferred from the... I think it was over a million dollars last, Parton, Mr. Parton said, last year. Does that number come down or is it about the same with your, since you've changed your format?
So what we have in...
I'm sorry, Amy, we need to get...
Okay, so what we have in the budget that y'all are looking at right now is for the management fee allocation, which would be for those overhead departments, one million, six hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. And then, and that is lower than what it was last year. But we also added the street use fee that Mr. McDaniel spoke about. And that is based on two percent of water and sewer estimated revenues. And so that came in at two hundred and forty thousand, two thirty-seven. So when you add those two numbers together, you get a total transfer of one million, eight hundred and sixty-six, forty-seven. And that's the number that you'll see in some of your detail as those two things added together. That's, yes, that's what's in the two thousand and eighteen budget. It's one million, eight ninety-nine. So it's down like thirty-something thousand.
It's only down thirty-three thousand or thirty-seven thousand.
It's about forty thousand, I think, was the difference.
Okay. Thank you. Another question, and I don't know, if you don't have the answers to these, maybe at another meeting. I'm kind of curious to know what percentage of our property taxes are frozen for people like myself that are turning sixty-five tomorrow? Hitting Medicare on every doctor in town.
How do you feel?
As of June the first. But I'm just curious, is there any, are there any numbers as to... We do, is it?
Yeah, it's part of the preliminary roll. Do you have that, Amy?
We can get it, I mean, I can get it later. I was just... Okay, maybe I can get it from you. And I was just kind of... And my next question, kind of a subset of that, is what percentage of total revenues for the city come from sales tax and/or services versus ad valorem tax? Do we have any kind of breakdown on that?
Yeah, there's part of that.
It's in the pie.
It was about sixty percent.
We can give him copies of the pages.
Okay. I can go online and see it. Okay, okay, it's on the website. I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. And then another couple of questions, I'll be finished. The five hundred and eighty-five thousand is gonna be the maintenance cost for the athletic complex. Is that correct for two thousand and eighteen?
Right, that includes some capital items, though.
Okay, okay. It was initially estimated by the ex-city manager to be about three hundred thousand. Would that be closer to the real maintenance number without the equipment or where are we on that?
Yeah, actually, he was telling us the number four fifty-three would be like a stabilized.
Okay, four fifty-three.
And actually, Mr. Parton actually was presenting to us the numbers closer to like three seventy-something.
Okay.
So that's the fair.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, is there a pro forma that's been created to estimate the revenues that will be generated from the athletic complex through tournaments and local use? Do we have that yet? No, I'm trying to figure out where we're gonna get, you know, what the net is gonna be, say, three, four, five years. What we're projecting is income versus expenses and what'll, you know, whether we'll break even or make money or have to borrow more.
I don't think there's any way to know until you find out how they're gonna book, be able to book the tournaments because it's a sliding scale. It's really out there.
So maybe in a couple, in about two or three years, we'll kind of have an idea of where...
Well, not after two or three. We, there's no revenue for two, so.
Right. So the better they do in terms of booking events...
Oh, in other words, if we have a lot of tournaments next year, we won't get any revenue from that?
You're not gonna have any next year, so.
First two years, no revenue, and then the better they do longer term, then they don't pay fees. So the idea, as I understand it, conceptually, was that the benefit would be the indirect benefit for lodging and restaurants and sales tax and so on and so forth. But that you wouldn't see it as a cost center, the direct revenue from fees.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from visitors? Well, if not, I guess that about covers it. Do you have any closing remarks, Mr. McDaniel, you'd like to make?
Thank you. I think this was good to put a lot of questions out there. Of course, every day I'm learning more and more about the city as well, so this is helpful. And we'll do it again in July.
Thank you. It was loads of fun. So at twelve forty-five, we will adjourn. No, it really was. I had coffee and everything.